Good evening. This is the October 22, 2013 meeting of the Goss Town Board of Selectmen. Tonight's meeting is solely for discussion on budget items. We won't be entertaining any other agenda items nor taking public comment at tonight's meeting, so I just want to make that clear before the meeting. So if you'd all join me in the pledge, we can get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We left off our discussions last night with the fire department budget. So that's where we'll pick up tonight. We had requests by a couple of members of the board to go through the budget line by line, just to sort of simplify to make, take a little bit of a while, but I think it'll keep things more orderly and straightforward. So if we can do that, Chief, that would be very helpful.
For which one? It's right here. It's up here in the front.
Oh, is it?
See, right here. Okay, it's gonna be five.
Yep, it's tab five in our budget books. It's a dark green one.
My tab page is missing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board, where do you want to resume? We've discussed several lines in the fire department budget. Not sure that we have gotten through all of them, so we'll keep this formal. Whoever wants to chime in with questions.
My understanding of last evening was there were no changes made to the fire department budget at this time?
No, not last night.
Nothing made last night?
Not last night, no.
I have nothing marked here, okay.
No, there's some questions asked, some clarifications provided, but no changes.
Chief, on the fire hydrants, why do we pay so much for the rental of fire hydrants? Is there any rhyme or reasons to why we're being charged what we're being charged for that?
From the water breach.
I know, but, I mean...
That's how they come up with that.
That's how they come up, by tabulation, the number of hydrants, or?
Yeah.
Yes, a rate per hydrant.
Yeah, rate times...
Rate per hydrant, alright.
Just for folks that are marching at home, we have three separate water districts in town that manage the fire hydrants throughout town. They're not managed by the town itself. And just to give an idea, the Manchester Water District manages the fire hydrants in the Pinnarville section up to the county property, and which equates about, actually equates to 134 hydrants. The Village Water District is actually where it is, in the village, where there's 146 hydrants listed. And in Grassmere is 4,500 hydrants. Each district charges...
How many in Grassmere?
There's 46 hydrants in Grassmere.
Oh, I see, 46.
You said forty. That's what I thought you said.
So there's, how many 46?
Forty-five, I'm sorry.
Forty-five hydrants.
And each district sets their rates. In this particular case, we had a rate increase by Manchester over this past summer of 2.5% which affected the hydrant rentals.
So this budget is based on, what's the rate from Manchester?
The rate equates to $568.50 apiece.
Five hundred...
Sixty-eight fifty.
Sixty-eight fifty.
The Village Water District, it's $400 hydrant, and for Grassmere, it's 426. There's also amount of, there's $1,500 budgeted in this hydrant line to maintain our cisterns, which are the underground water tanks that are scattered throughout town.
Thank you, Chief. Manchester's a lot higher than Goss Town and Grassmere.
What was Manchester again?
Five sixty-eight fifty.
Five sixty-eight fifty.
Five fifty-eight fifty?
Five sixty-eight, five-six-eight fifty. And we also budget, we also budget for an average of one hydrant increase. What happens sometimes is one of the, one of the districts will call us mid-year and say, "We've added a hydrant to such and such street," and then we're on the hook for paying a portion of all of that hydrant.
Now, that would only be done through the planning process, right? I mean, if, they just can't make a decision to add a hydrant?
They did this year.
They can, under New Hampshire law, as a water district, they can do that. Whether we accept it is on our, is on our shoulders. And the typical procedure for us is when we are notified that there's a new hydrant, we have them flow-tested and make sure that they'll function when needed. Once they flow-tested and give us the results of the test, then we accept it.
Like fire hydrants, you do an acceptance test on that hydrant?
Yeah.
Has to be certified.
Yep.
If you'd like to transfer that fire hydrant to the admin budget, I'd be happy to...
No, that's okay.
Okay, just checking.
It's where it belongs, it's just...
Where in administration?
No, it's where it belongs, in the fire department. It's just quite a difference between the village precincts and, well, Manchester's quite different.
Right.
Other questions for Chief O'Brien relative to his budget presentation? Nick?
Line 50310, cell phones. How many does that represent?
That represents five cell phones and five wireless cards that go along with either laptops or mobile, mobile computers. It also, there's an allowance in there for equipment replacement or repairs or placement if they're damaged.
And those five phones are dedicated to...
The administration staff, the staff.
Which ones are in the amulets, Chief? I know we have...
That'd be in the ammo's budget, but we have, we have one in each ammo's.
Yep, okay, ammo's budget.
And along with three wireless cards in the amulets.
So the five wireless cards are where?
The car one, car two, and the inspector has one, and you have one located on tower one, and we were supposed to get another one, we did get another one recently for a tablet.
And that cellphone line used to be in telecommunications, correct?
Correct.
And telecommunications only reflects the line to the tower?
What you see there for telecommunications is a backup 911 line that rings simultaneously at Station 18.
Okay.
So if dispatch went down, we could, we could pick up the 911 line.
I guess I'll ask just a generalized town question. Is there a reason why we need cell phones? Why the town needs to provide cell phones?
Have this discussion before, I mean, every department can speak.
Well, it's definitely, in our particular case, it has increased our efficiency because we're able to, they're not just plain old cell phones, they're smartphones, so we could retrieve messages and emails quicker and send documents or information. That way, person doesn't, you know, if they're out in the, out in the road doing an inspection, they don't have to come back to get their messages. They can pick them up out in the road and continue on out there.
Does he, excuse me, does the inspector have an air card?
Yeah.
Laptop?
He does, well, he has got, he's got a tablet that...
With an air card?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Which could do the same thing?
Well, it's not, it's a Wi, it's a Wi-Fi, it's not an air card, it's Wi-Fi, where it picks up Bluetooth signal. So he needs a, he needs his smartphone in order to connect with it. If you know what I mean.
I thought we were getting, so then go, who, where are the wireless cards?
Wireless cards would be car one...
Car two.
Car two, tower one. You now have a tablet, and actually, two tablets now.
And so where are the two tablets?
They're actually in my office getting set up.
And who would have, who would they be assigned to?
They're gonna be going to car one, car two, because we're gonna be replacing the, eventually gonna be replacing the laptops. The reason why we're doing that is, is a tablet costs $500, and a Panasonic ToughBuck laptop costs $5,000. So substantial savings there, and we can do the same.
So the two wireless cards that are in the laptops will go away?
They'll go away eventually. But we're also, we're gonna be introducing tablets into the engines to get that, get them onboard also. The big, the big thing is, for us is, with IMC, with the new CAT system, we have the ability to get dispatch information and location information directly from, from dispatch through the wireless card into a tablet. And our companies responding could see where the call is, and will actually be able to see where all the units are in retrospect to their, to the, to the call. It also shows the location of the incident with the hydrants. So again, it's increasing our level of productivity and reducing the demand of us bothering dispatch for incident locations and where hydrants are located.
And I would agree with that, that the use of the tablets that way. But I'm wondering, just, could we maybe get a report from all the departments, number of cell phones, and the type of cellphone, and the reason? In other words, if it's a, if it's a smartphone, why they would need a smartphone versus just a cellphone? You know, if it's a matter of keeping in touch or being able to make phone calls, you know, there's a big cost difference between a simple cellphone and...
What we've noticed with, Brian Ray could probably, he's our representative, whenever we need to order a phone, or he looks at the rates. And as of late, I noticed that just a regular cellphone doesn't give you any cost benefit other than the initial purchase perhaps, of going a smartphone versus a traditional, traditional cellphone with the plans that we have, the miserable plans that we currently carry. So that's the reason why we eventually transferred to the smartphones, because the added feature in the cost is virtually the same.
And maybe Brian, or someone from IT can also provide that information as well, what our plans are, if the board, Mr. Chair, if that's...
Absolutely.
The board's desire, I'm just requesting it.
Yeah, it's good information to have, sure.
Physical examinations, Chief, I know we were doing some shopping around.
Yeah, we went shopping around, and the place that actually we're performing our physicals now, or getting our physicals done now for employees, was the cheapest. But even though they did just up their rates by three or four percent, and the increases what you're seeing there in regards to that.
44100, professional dues. Don't mix up that one.
That one is a laundry list of items that, dues and subscriptions that we, that we currently subscribe to. We, we're, we belong to two mutual aid associations, we pay dues to, also a myriad of certain subscriptions and magazines, certain dues to organizations for selected members of the department, also includes a hazmat, hazmat team subscription. We belong to the smart team that runs out of Nashua, and that's, that's pretty much the lion's share of that, that line anyway.
I see it, rental equipment, Chief? What was, I thought I saw that. Equipment rental, is that, what does that cover?
That is, that is just the copy machine at Church Street Station.
Okay.
Training expenses? 44370.
Yeah, this, there's a bump in the training, training line, because our, we have, as we go year to year, we have goals for certain programs that we want to offer to our, to our members. And that's one of the, I guess the benefits of being on the Goss Town Fire Department is we do offer a myriad of training and certification levels, and we feel that's been successful in trying to keep the number of call firefighters that we have because of the training. This coming year, we have two particular classes that, that we'll be hosting at some point in time in the year, is a firefighter two certification program, and also a driver upper, driver op aerial program. We have a number of personnel that are, that are, have moved up through the certification levels to those ranks, and this is where they need to progress. We also keep a number, a certain amount of money in there for folks to get their firefighter one and so on, and the basic, the basic level of skills, and other specialized rescue, rescue programs that come along during the year. And, but the two big ones are gonna be the firefighter two and the aerial ops program.
So if I can ask, what are the expenses for those? Not, you don't have to break them down, but in other words, what, what is it that is costing? Are we doing, using an in-house instructor?
No, it's a state instructor.
So we have no one in, our department?
For aerial, no. For the fire two, we don't have any in-house instructors other than Selectmen Lemay, I believe.
Captain Tower might be able to, but I mean, yeah, I mean, we're, we wouldn't have enough instructors to run that program on our own, Nick, we need, we need some outside help for that.
Just to give an example, firefighter two is, is current state, state program price for that is $520 per student.
Understood, yeah. No, I understand, it's much, it's much cheaper to host it in-house. I was just curious whether we had instructors to be able to do that.
Chief, on property insurance, how many, how many deductibles are you carrying?
Under fire, we carry one, and under ammo, we carry two. Lately, we've had more experience with fire because of the, we, through the lightning storms, the alarm system got hit a couple times, causing damage.
Line 53630, body repairs, a 25% increase. Explain a little bit about...
The increase we put in for the fact of engine one, and not knowing if engine one would be replaced or not, if engine one remained in the budget, we can reduce that, I was thinking by $4,000, that could probably be reduced.
And if not, what would those repairs be to engine one?
That was the, to repair the body mounts, and the other issues that we're gonna be dealing with in that particular truck.
That doesn't fall under maintenance charging for vehicles?
Yeah, for some reason, this, this line, this line existed prior to my arrival, and I suspect it was, looking back on the history of this line, it was added in back when we had the original problems with engine one, and significant work was budgeted to, to get it where it is today. And the line's existed ever since.
The line 55535, station repairs, the 44% increase?
The increase there was due to Station 17's water system. As we noted earlier, in terms of other, other presentations, is, there's a high level of arsenic and radon in the, in the water system up there that needs to be contended with, this is kind of, if, if that station, station program does not, does not pass through, that's a high priority item.
So it's for treating for arsenic?
Correct.
Other questions for the chief on either fire EMS cost?
50245 in EMS radios. 2012, we had $2,700 expended, nothing. 2013, 2,700, year-to-date have expended nothing, at least on this form as of September.
We, we have to, we had to spend some money, we're having radio issues with one of the amulets, it turns out to be the antenna, because, because of low clearance at Station 18, we're having connection issues there, so we'll see some, some money spent out of that line in the coming weeks and months. Also, just to point and note that the radios that we, that the department received under a homeland security program by the state back in 2002, 2003, interoperability radios for mobile and portable radios, the portable radios are really being, being the workforce of the department, and they're still supported by Motorola where we got the radios. The mobile radios, on the other hand, are no longer being supported by Motorola. So at some point in time, we're gonna have to phase, phase the old radios out, and my plan is just to phase them one by one as we go along, and, and that way, if we have a radio failure, you know, we'll have possibly one on the shelf or parts to fix that. So by replacing one or two a year, each of them costs about $4,000 with the install, to stay on top of it anyway.
Chief, on the physicals for both fire and EMS? Is that once every two years per person?
Typically, it's once every two years, or when we take, when we look at somebody, take them on, hire them, they go through a full physical. We, it's once every two years, if they're over the age of 50, they go annually.
What are we paying for physical?
It depends on, well, the, the typical, well, I can tell you. For new members, it, on average, it runs about $400 per physical, and then any vaccines or titers are added on top of that. For example, if they need hepatitis vaccine, it's on top of that. For the, the current members under 40, they go every other year, it's about $300.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, thank you.
Lion's share is the lab test, we get, we get hit with the lab, lab test fees.
Chief, foam expenses, 47-800.
What line are you on?
Phone.
What line?
Sorry.
47-800.
47-800.
It's in the white pages, page 25 in the back, midway, midway down, you'll see foam expenses.
The increase is due to?
I believe there is an increase in that line. It's maintaining, maintaining level.
It was overspent the last time.
Yeah, last year was over-expent because of the number of fires that we had. It doesn't take much for us to use that up, so knock on wood, we hope to maintain that line. This year particularly, it's been a fairly wet summer, so the number of brush fires were down, so the use of foam was, was reduced.
Are we still dealing with a foam bank?
We do have a foam bank. It's typically, it, with the foam bank is you have to replace what you use, so for example, if you have a large hazardous material spill, you use the foam bank, and it's usually up to the, the person that caused the crash, or the carrier of the chemical, to pay for that foam bag, but we belong to that foam bank.
Do we get reimbursed, do we apply for reimbursement for wildfires?
Yes, we do.
From the state?
This year, we, there hasn't been any, anything put in, but we typically do if we have a paper or more, where we commit a lot of personnel training, I mean, personnel employment.
So they would reimburse us for the foam?
Yes. And we get most of our foam from the state, state anyway, so we get the reduced rate on, on the foam. If you buy foam commercially, as Nick, as Selectmen Campusana would know, it's well over $100 a pail now, but what the state rate is, is just under, it's like $90 or $80 a pail.
On the turnout line, Chief? If I look at the numbers, you had 18,900 budgeted, year-to-date total, you've spent 842, or how's that, what, how the numbers work there?
Well, with the vendor that we, we use, we purchased the, we ordered the equipment, the PPE, and they typically don't invoice us until all the garments are in and they've been fitted. So we, we typically don't get a bill until later on, but we have purchased the gear, but it's just a matter of just getting the bill in and settling out properly.
But the printout we're looking at is from 9/6.
Yeah. We purchased, we, real quick, you know, for the, for the board, under NFPA, the, the PPE, the personal protective equipment that the firefighters, responders wear, the helmet, gloves, pants, coats, they have a lifespan of about 10 years, and we had a number of helmets that are meeting that 10-year, 10-year limit.
Right.
So we had to replace out quite a number of helmets. For some reason, it's not, it's not reflected in your, in your report.
Chief, can you explain the water line?
The increase on the water line is...
Well, what is it also?
Oh, what is it? It pays for the domestic water for Station 18 on Church Street and Station 19 on Mass Road. The significant increase for this year was the, there's a separate charge for the connection for the fire sprinklers at both of those locations. And we had a, we had a rate increase with Manchester also. And we had a, we had a rate increase with Manchester also.
I have a question on the hoses. Uh, for a while, we were going through, uh, a, um, changeover on the hoses. Did we complete that, or is this just for replacement of the existing hose?
We completed that changeover.
Yeah.
Uh, where we, where we have, what we call is a, it's called wet pack hose. Uh, in the past, you see those, you know, you have the hose towers, you had to dry them, clean them, dry them, and then wait until they, they were dried and then put them back in, in the rack. So you always had to have a, a, a number of, uh, hose in reserve, uh, ready to, ready to go. Uh, now that we can keep that, that number amount in reserve to, to a minimum, and, uh, it's just basically useful when a hose does break or fail, uh, for a reason. And this is just replacement of what, what fails.
But the other process we've, we've completed.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
It's very nice to have all that new hose, Phil.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, the new hose is, uh, it's, it's lighter, it's lightweight, so when you have, uh, a, 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 a small crew that has to repack a bunch of hose, um, it doesn't wear them out for the day.
Yep.
Any other questions on line items for fire or EMS? Everybody satisfied? Need more time?
I'm good.
Go down.
Uh, that's a good question. How many full-time employees do we have on payroll?
Do you know? Is it any, is mine?
Sixteen. Sixteen total.
Sixteen?
Um, EMS.
That includes yourself?
That includes myself.
Yeah, okay.
And you have sixteen plus, plus the secretary.
Oh, okay, sixteen plus, so seventeen total, full-time employees.
Thank you.
What's the side of the line?
Little set.
Nick?
Um, information-wise, I'm, I'm almost, I'm just kinda trying to formulate.
Okay, so we can thank, thank, thank the chief and.
Thank you, chief.
Send him on his way. Thank you, chief. I see both Rick and Carl here. We're gonna take next.
We already did, Rick.
Yeah, that's right, we did, Rick. Why are you here, Rick? Just to listen? You love being here, just like it?
I thought we had to be here for another round of deliberations. I also heard there was Oreo cookies that were gonna be served.
No, 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 no. Now you got misinformation.
You were supposed, you were supposed to bring pizza, and nobody told you?
I was supposed to bring it.
Yeah, I, do you have any other questions, Rick? I mean, I don't think.
Want a cookie?
You need to tell me.
Buy your effort, come get a cookie.
You may have a cookie, we're just busting on you. Come on up.
I don't have cookies, that's why I was just joking.
Ah, come on up.
For real, we're bribing you.
Alan made them, so I'd be careful.
Oh, come on, call, let me hurt you.
Rick?
You're profiling, I'll call them.
Alan made them, might be a little, you know, grease on them or something.
Oh, come on. That hurt, that hurt.
They're very good.
Are you trying to say he mixed transmission fluid in with them?
No hydraulic. A lot smoother transition.
Thank you very much.
Keep the meeting sharp.
That's right.
They smell delicious.
They're very good.
There's a lot of calorie in them.
Yeah, right.
All right, so.
That's why we exercise, to eat more.
So, we got Carl. We got Public Works. It's tab four, the yellow tab.
I don't know if I wanna go before Carl or after Carl.
I'll tie her remote for you soon.
Will there be anything left?
Carl, we've had a request by, gotta kinda shift the, the, uh, process halfway through, had a crest, request by a couple of members of the board to go through each line item. Some of them will skip over very quickly, obviously, because they're fucking all that stuff, but if you do that, then we're sure not to miss anything. That would be appreciated. So, on page nineteen.
Yep.
Under the tab four.
My page numbers jive with your page numbers, so we might have a, do a little juggling.
Cemetery?
Starts out with cemetery, yeah.
So just in, in, um, summary, no changes in this particular division at all, except for a reduction in hours because we shifted, you know, um, our employee doesn't work a hundred percent for cemetery, so with the creation of the new works, a little bit of a, a shifting of, of wages, so you see the wage line actually decreased. The rest of it, with that, pretty much, uh, the same, well, you know, all the benefits and insurance lines decreased with the hours that moved, you know, over to Public Works. So, I don't know if anybody has questions down to benefits. Professional dues is actually just a membership in the State Cemetery Association. The rest of those are all pretty, pretty standard. Electricity, water, gasoline, the equipment maintenance, there's really no frills, nothing new.
We did get some good news this week on next year's budget. The unemployment, we're gonna save about seven thousand dollars next year, so all those lines will be readjusted.
Boy.
There we go.
We're done.
What'd you say, seventy-eight hundred?
Seven thousand. Increase, uh, decrease in unemployment townwide.
Dictator or any of those?
Anything on cemetery?
Carl, on line, uh, forty-one, three hundred, overtime pay, how does, how does, how would someone accumulate overtime pay?
That's typically only if somebody insists on a Saturday burial.
Okay.
You have to have somebody come in, uh, to do that.
So there's an offsetting revenue to that?
Yeah, there is a higher fee for a.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just trying to figure that one out. Okay. Got my question answered.
Yeah, I don't see much else there. No one personally?
Yeah.
Go on to next page, page twenty, with Public Works operations.
Obviously, there's nothing in this one.
He has a sense of humor.
Here, uh, what makes this one interesting is, is this is where, you know, we created Stormwater and Fleet as new divisions, so a lot of this, um, was reduced as well as expenses moved into those two new divisions. So there's no, in this, uh, particular area, there are, there is no, um, new employees at all. I do have concern, I've, I've been following your discussions on seasonal, and I'll explain again what we budgeted was in the unlikely event that one of our, uh, summer students was to take the insurance, we'd included a little stipend, it would be for one month. I still struggle with how we would manage, particularly with our engineering interns, twenty-hour-a-week employees, it would be a nightmare, absolute nightmare. Not to mention how bad it'd be for the kids, uh, to try to secure the work they need.
Well, we could de-deck for one month for next year anyway, because my understanding is, um, the penalties don't start till two thousand and fifteen, so we really didn't have to budget in two thousand and fourteen for that.
No, but we wanted to, we wanted to start looking at it at least, to try to figure out how, how to manage it.
Yes, Nick, your question?
Um, and this would go across to probably Parks and Rec as well. Seasonal, um, when someone comes back the following year, if we rehire the same person, do they start at the same base salary? And if not, why are we not just hiring at the same? I mean, it's a seasonal position.
Well, I, I can't speak for, uh, for Rick at all, but what we have always done is we hire our summer seasons at ninety percent of the base laborer rate. That's been our formula from as long as I've been here for seventeen years. Our thought process, this is when we hire, uh, somebody for a second or third season, is they've already gone through the training, the flag of certification, so they literally hit the ground running the minute they come through the door. Um, it's generally a twenty cents an hour, or I don't know what it works out to, but it's not a very big difference from season to season. So for us, it's a recognition of, they already know what we do, they're kinda already trained, they're familiar with the crew, uh, so we see that as an asset. Our, our summer, for the most part, our summer, uh, employees are, they're not just, though you often see them with a flag in their hand, that's not all they do. They jump right into the pipe crews, they, they're jumping back and forth, you know, some days we need more in cemetery, some days we need more in highway, depending on what's going on. Um, so they actually have to be quite versatile. So, we, we appreciate having somebody with that experience that comes back. Like I said, I can't speak for what Rick does, I have no idea.
In summit, in cemetery?
It's the same.
Same thing?
It's the same. We, we usually, there are usually, um, two that we kinda try to keep in cemetery, but that doesn't always work. You know, sometimes they have to come out, and we switch them around, but, you know, we, we try to keep that cemetery crew together because they, they understand the rotation and how they're moving around.
So would you say they get paid ninety percent of the base laborer's rate, is that?
Yeah, whatever the ba, yeah, and, uh, of course now, well, I suppose it goes up with the caller. As I say, with the new formula we're gonna have in the contract, it's, it's different, you know, with the matrix, always used to adjust every year, and we just applied the, the formula to the, to the bottom of the matrix, and that, that's how we did it.
And so how is their salary adjusted each additional year?
That's a good question. I don't know, maybe we looked at step B, I'm not sure. I, I honestly can't answer that. I'd have to look back at the paperwork and see how we figured it out. But just knowing the rationale, my guess is that we probably, the second year, they ninety percent of step B, but I, I don't know.
Would it be possible, could we get a, a cost comparison of what the seasonal cost would be if they started at that base rate versus what we're currently paying?
For all seasonal labors?
Mm-hmm. Just as a comparison to see what that cost difference would be.
And then the, the engineering interns are a whole different, that's kind of a whole different thing, we don't do them the same way. We start them depending on what year in school they are, they earn a little bit higher, so it depends on what education they bring into us.
And they typically are only here once?
No, we've been very lucky, um, and we occasionally have a one-season person, but, um, we have an intern currently that this is his third season with us. We've had several that have been multiple seasons, and that's very helpful.
And how is their salary adjusted each year?
It's just, uh, it's, it's just, it's agreed when we hire them. It's not a lot more than the other kids, but it's a little, it's maybe a dollar, a dollar fifty more than the kids we're hiring to push along more. And it's, it's budgeted accordingly, you know, when it puts that together, she looks at what we typically do.
Carl, line forty-five zero thirty, the consulting services?
Yes.
Budget request for thirty-two, seven-ten. What's the, is that dam, is that the dam? What's in there?
Well, there's, there's several things. Um, the dam is in there, but that is the same, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's the same as it's been. I think the big increase there is we have our roadside mowing in that, uh, in that line. So we've increased that to twenty thousand, which we were budgeting twelve. And we added the knotweed, eight thousand dollars for, um, knotweed eradication, to start trying to get our hands around that. Those are the two new things in there.
So roadside mowing and knotweed are under consulting?
Yeah.
Services line?
Yep, they are.
Why, why is that?
Because we hire someone to do it, contract.
It's right here.
That line used to be consulting and contracted services.
Okay, that, that'd make it a little more clear, okay.
Yeah.
We need to consult with somebody about how to mow road sides.
Yeah, I mean, the other, just, uh, just to review the other things that are in there is our, our annual drug testing program, um, our, our lease, or copier.
And hazardous waste.
Our hazardous waste, but that's not household hazardous waste day, that's if we generated something that we had to deal with.
Get rid of, yeah. Thank you.
Carl, we don't have the ability to do the roadside mowing in-house?
We don't really have any effective equipment for it. And we've talked about getting, you know, till we go out and buy a tractor with a, with a, we used to have a holder that had kind of a, a floor mower, but it really didn't work very well, it was too small. And, uh, you know, the other thing is if you have that piece of equipment, you gotta have a person to drive it.
Right.
It would mean definitely one of our other crews to, so, so far, it's worked out okay, uh, hiring it out. We're hoping once we get caught up, right now, we're, we're mowing through some pretty witty stuff, because it's been getting out of control, and holding after a year or two it'll. Couple of years, we'll start getting it under control.
So when we contract for the knotweed, what are we contracting for? Chemical treatments, or physical removal, or combination, or?
Well, I think as we, depending on where it is, it'll be a combination, but what we've envisioned is a mowing treating. And I honestly haven't looked at the details, just from what I understand, as long as there's no wetlands near it, you can mow it and then get, spray it immediately and keep after it a couple of times. You know, I showed you the map when I came in, there's, there's a few areas that are really bad, and we wanna try to tackle them first. And then start branching out from there. I honestly don't, I mean, we put this money in here as a guestimate, but I, it's not like I've talked to a whole bunch of companies that do this, so I have no idea what it even costs.
Couldn't help but noticing that as you come in on one fourteen from Bedford, the police now like to use a very large knotweed bush to hide behind with their radar trap.
Yes, and I'll, I'll have to coordinate with them which ones we keep and which ones we get rid of.
Blue light zone.
You can't, you can't possibly see them that well, well hidden.
Carl, I got a question, just, it's on fleet paint, re, reconditioning. It's actually, I don't see it on the line here, you have it, it's back on page ten. It's actually, I don't see it on the line here, you have it, it's back on page ten.
If it's fleet, it's probably been moved to fleet. Which would be... I think it would be on page twenty-one. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's still how it works. Page twenty-three.
Under painting and recon equipment?
Yeah.
It's page twenty-one in our book, line fifty-four five five zero, is that the one you were talking about?
No, it's page twenty-three.
It's twenty-three. It is still line five four five five zero.
Painting and recon, thirty-two seven.
What was the question?
Well, the question was back here, we, it's called fleet paint and reconditioning, and I got that part. And then under that line, we're looking for a new bucket for the loader, and the loader is five years old. Is the bucket that worn out or gone away because, are we gonna buy a new bucket or why are we not repairing that bucket? I guess what I'm trying to get to is, why aren't we repairing it or just doing a, not necessarily doing a repair, but why are we putting in wear bars or not to keep it longer? Mine's, mine one is three years old, they're four years old and this one isn't, and I have no need to repair mine, replace mine because obviously, well, we repaired the bottom.
Yeah, well, I think the rationale here was if we could get a new bucket, we wouldn't get rid of the old one, the old one would be repaired. We would keep the unit in service and then we would have a spare bucket. So the next time we replace a machine, we'd have, we'd never have to worry about being a machine out of service because of the bucket being repaired.
Yeah, but you only can be out of service to repair the bottom, I think, for maybe a day and a half, two days, it's not a big event. I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out where we're at here, because I know, it costs me about twelve to fifteen hundred dollars to repair the bottom of a bucket, as opposed to nine thousand dollars for a new one, and it's a two-day, usually no more than two days. I'm just curious if we don't go out and either hire some of the, maybe Matt Spear or some of the welding companies are in the area and let them take a look and see if they can take him.
Oh, we've got a very good welder that we can take care of it, it's just really taking the equipment down. That's why we're making the request. Obviously, the bucket can be repaired, but it takes the piece out of service and... It's pretty interchangeable, so whatever new machine we have, we'd be able to use the same bucket.
Yeah, we've got a cat, we've got a cat loader, we've still got two vacos, correct?
Um, yes.
So we're not really completely out of service, I mean, as far as, I would think a little planning on that part, they could fix that bucket for a lot less money than even buying a new one. And the only reason I say this, because I know all the companies I deal with, nobody has spare buckets laying around, they do, yeah, they repair them and they put new bottoms and new sides. And we've got the ability with enough equipment to put that out of service for a couple of days, certainly. Just throwing it out there, we need to look at, every dime we can save is a dime saved. I couldn't find any of the lines, that's all, it's all in one.
All it is, is nine thousand dollars in that line you're talking about, which is fifty-four five fifty for a new bucket.
Are we on a state budget plan, a state blank plan? It must be, right?
We look at the state plan, and if that's the best price, then we go with it.
Yeah.
But we do shop around outside the state plan as well.
I mean, personally, I'd like to see us repair the bucket because it'll go a long, it'll go a long ways and certainly will last a long time. I know there's a lot of them located, they've got way more hours, I'm sure, on time than they've got on this. It needs to be maintained better, I think, is what the issue's gonna be, when it starts to wear, it has to be looked at before it gets beyond repair, I guess.
From what Mark tells me, it's not beyond repair, it's just the case of...
Yeah, I was looking at, I'd go and take a look at it.
Are we, are we back on highway, public work?
I believe that's where we're working our way through, yeah.
The, you know, the line striping, which is just below the consulting services, that's just slightly up based on the last couple of years pricing. The traffic light repair is significantly down, we just, this week, finished the controller replacement down at Anover. That was a one-time thing that was in this line in thirteen, which did not repeat itself. You know, compaction tests, all of these lines are all pretty much the same, based on what we actually have to use them, you know, how much we use them. Let's see, tree cutting. Obviously, these are not when we're doing one of our reclamation projects, you know, that, when we do a big road job, the road job budget pays for these things. These are when we get a resident complaining about a dead tree or trench patch, compaction tests, those kind of things.
Improving line of sight.
Yeah.
Carl, why is it, why is compaction up?
It's, you know, just on what we expect we're gonna spend. It's really one of those, it's not a big dollar amount, so I don't spend a lot of time worrying about it, but...
But is it, is it used for when we reclaim roads?
No, when we do a big project, it's where, you know, one, Pleasant Street would wipe that budget completely out just in itself. So it's more if we're doing a lot of trench patching or smaller jobs, that's what would hit this line, not so much the big roads. Look at the last couple of years, we haven't used twelve hundred bucks, but who knows? It's about three hundred to have those guys come out for a couple of hours, so it's not hard to chew up twelve hundred bucks.
Carl, you moved street sweeping over to stormwater?
Yeah, it's, it's actually required in our stormwater permit.
What's required?
Street sweeping.
Oh, no, I understand.
Yeah, so we moved it into that stormwater line to track it with stormwater. And the, there's a very large increase, which I guess we can talk about that globally because that affects a lot of that whole org. As of now, we still have no idea whether EPA is gonna issue that permit or not. So anything I tell you is pure speculation. As a matter of fact, I have a meeting Friday with Thelma Murphy from EPA, talking about a presentation, not specifically this permit, but I don't think she even knows whether or not they're gonna issue the permit. They're issuing the Massachusetts draft permit, if they haven't already done it, they're doing that very soon. So whether they flip the New Hampshire one out quick, we don't know. If we do, that's, that's what this was based on. I don't know what the permit will look like in final form. So this budget is based on what we saw in draft form. So obviously, if we get to the end of December and they haven't issued any kind of permit, there's a pretty good chunk of savings we can take out of this, out of this budget. But it's, I hesitate to do it because if we saw a permit issued in November or December, we may be under the gun to comply with it. So my advice would be kind of keep that one in your, in your back pocket and we'll see how we go over the next month or so and see if we get any information that would lead us to believe that it could be eliminated.
And the five thousand dollars in advertising?
Is, where are we looking, in stormwater?
I'm sorry, I was, yeah, we can wait if we're gonna go to stormwater afterwards. Hang on to that, we'll wait, so I think we're still on operations.
We're still on page twenty, yeah. Forty-nine, four hundred.
So, you know, I don't know if there's, you know, the same guardrail repair, office supplies, operating supplies, you know, these are all kind of just administrative costs. Postage, we just kept it the same, doesn't look like we've been spending that. Advertising, cell phone, electricity, propane.
How many cell phones in your department, Carl?
All of the supervisors have them, there are only two smartphones of the bunch, everybody else just has a ruggedized cellphone. For us, it's more about communicating with vendors and contractors and coordinating the outside world. Our driver that's on the road, the tractor trailer driver has one, just for emergency purposes. Diesel, gasoline, obviously the formula, you know, we use the average gallon pack, the bid price is.
The diesel fuel, that's just your department that's...
Right.
Okay.
Yep, just how it works. The facility maintenance, the decrease there is we had the money for the roof, which is, just got completed yesterday, thank goodness. We have a new roof. The salt line, I think when I did the presentation, I shared with you our, our experience with that. Mike Hillhouse and I are gonna be doing a presentation at the APWA Snow and Ice Conference in November, sharing that same experience with the rest of the public works community in New England. Street lights, signs and...
Bridge repairs?
Bridge repairs, remember the six thousand dollars we were talking about in capital and, that's the year now. So we, we increased, we had that study done and quantum engineers gave us repairs, like short-term repairs and long-term repairs. So the forty-six thousand dollars we have here would be to do the repairs they've suggested on East and Botno Bridge, Terrell Hill Road Bridge.
And Henry Bridge.
And some minor stuff on Henry Bridge, yeah. So we have kind of the big stuff in CIP and this is...
Page five on the, on the handout breaks that forty-six thousand dollars down.
Yeah. And then the, you know, the resurfacing, the crack sealing are consistent with the three percent increase that the original road plan contemplated. And the sidewalk maintenance is also, it's been in CIP, five percent annual increase as long as I've been here. That's pretty much it for public works operations.
Questions for Carl on any of the line items in the public works operation portion of this budget? And then, how about the stormwater utilities, which is page twenty-two?
So, stormwater utilities, you know, as I said, it's a speculative budget. The key, the key factors that we were looking at with this, the biggest ticket items for us are data management. There is some more mapping that we would need to do, more detail that we don't currently have that we'd have to report. But a lot of it is sampling and data management and, quite frankly, verifying the data that exists. You know, we have all kinds of data points that, that need to closely be looked at. So as a community, like all other, all the other MS four communities, we have two ways to do it. We can go out and hire a consultant to do it all for us, or we can try to do it with our in-house staff. We've been quite successful, I think, doing it in-house so far, but this is a lot more involved than what we've done in the past. So what I've recommended here is a new technician. Our assistant engineer would still kind of oversee the program, but for all of the mapping and the data management and a lot of the base reporting requirements, I would see a technician level person doing that. We also included two new interns, there's a tremendous amount of field sampling that has to be done and visual inspection every summer. So the interns we have in highway, doing our pavement stuff, I just don't think that we could heap this on them and expect them to do both. So we've added two additional interns here and a new technician. So all of those employee costs are associated with that. We also broke, we looked at our existing staff, like the assistant engineer, our two guys that operate the vaco. Everybody that touches stormwater, our utility superintendent, we kind of average out how many hours a week are they dealing with doing stormwater? And we budget accordingly, so this has a sliver of four or five existing employees as well. So that ninety-four thousand dollar salary line is a mixture of all of those things. It's slices of full-time folks that already do some stormwater and the new technician. And then the season are those two new.
So how much of the total four hundred thousand plus budget, Carl, is attributed to this new EPA requirement, if indeed it comes through? How much of it are we doing anyways or in what?
Well, I remember when I, I went back, I don't know if it was DES or, I guess the question, but I went back and calculated what I thought was the increase just based on the new permit, and I remember I came up with about two hundred and seventy thousand, which was attributable to the new permit. So I'd have to, you know, I'd have to go in and back out the new positions, but just to highlight, you know, a few of them. The TV inspection cost, forty-eight thousand, that's brand new. The sampling costs, I think we have five thousand now, this budget has thirty-three thousand, so there's a huge increase there. The street sweeping, we bumped up to seventy-nine thousand five hundred, I will be absolutely shocked if we saw that because the permit contemplates sweeping every road, even ditch line, you know, gravel shoulder and ditch line, which makes no sense at all to me, that why you would send the sweeper up a non-curved road. And I think every community in the world made that comment, so hopefully EPA will go out and learn what a, like a nice street sweeper does and realize it's not gonna do much on gravel.
Except to remove all your gravel.
Yeah. The, the advertising is, you know, the new permit is a lot more intensive on public education. And we not only have to do the occasional stormwater message, we have to do targeted messages to the business community. We have to, so there's different sectors of our, of our... the business community, we have to, so there's different sectors of our, uh, of our community that have to have targeted messages to them. So it's gonna be, have to be a lot more, uh, different avenues of public education, so that's, we plug that in as advertising. And then the drainage repairs is just, we just carried it over just because it seemed to me a bit better here.
Carl, what is the actual cost for those additional positions?
See if I can get it broken out for you. The new positions would total forty, just self of, um, forty-seven thousand dollars. For strictly the new positions. And that's, that's just the salary, the benefits, you know, would, would come off when we took that off.
The full timer with benefits is thirty-nine thousand.
Half a year?
Is that budgeted how many weeks?
Yeah, I think so.
That is for half a year?
I think, uh, it's budgeted, yeah, twenty-six weeks is what it says here. Oh, you know what? No, I take that back. I think, um, I can't see the formula that's in here, but it looks to me like, uh, this might be three quarters.
Let's see, the beginning salary's thirteen weeks, so yeah, it is three quarters.
And, you know, the reason, the reason being the sampling season starts, you know, we, we would have to have this person kind of lined up pretty quick. So we'll use next season.
Now that, I don't believe this has health insurance, so that number in Act thirty-nine thousand does not have health insurance in it because that's in a different place. But the FICA medication thing related to it, retirement.
So, just so I understand, Carl, so if the EPA mandate does not come down in two thousand and fourteen, there's two hundred and seventy thousand that would come out of this budget?
Thereabouts, I, I can figure out, it's roughly that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm having a meeting with, uh, staff Thursday, purpose of which is to try to determine what we think we could do with the people we have currently to get ready. I've heard rumors, but they're totally unsubstantiated, that EPA has recognized that communities have a fiscal s- budget cycle that we have to deal with, uh, and they're all different. So the rumor I've heard is that even if they were to whip the permit out in December, they would make it effective at a later date, recognizing that communities have to go through a planning cycle. So, the closer we get to December, the more comfortable I'm getting with, we probably won't have to come out of the gate in January, ready to comply fully with this permit.
EPA doesn't whip anything out that quickly.
Well, and it's, you know, history is our teacher, that's probably true too.
Could you, um, supply the board, um, with revised numbers for this division if the MS four doesn't go into effect next year?
Yeah, that would be helpful, alright.
Not for more work, but it would be helpful if we could see, for instance, there's co-mingling of, if you could kind of take this that you've already put, break it into two columns. One is what has been transferred from other lines that are existing and the other one is what is new.
Yep.
And then it should total to the same, but then we can see exactly what.
Yeah.
Would it be possible, is there not, could we get a cost for a consulting, consultant to do this? And what that would be?
Yeah, but I don't think the tasks are defined, that's the problem.
Well, and it, you know, the, uh, it's, it's amazing because a lot of communities have contacted me because they're trying to do what we're doing right now. And, boy, different consultants are telling towns all different things of what they need to do and not do and, really depends on which one you call and ask as to what you're gonna get, because some of them...
I can imagine they're licking their chops.
Oh, some of them, uh, are coming up with quite some stuff that has to be done, so...
I, I'm not asking for a consultant to tell us what to do, I think you have a very good grasp of what we need to do. I'm asking for a, a, a cost of a consultant doing what
Yep.
you already know has to be done, based on what you're reading of the permit will be.
I, I, you know, after Thursday, that's essentially what we're doing, is scoping out that level of detail. I mean, I could, I could certainly invite a couple in and have a chat and see what they come back with. Because, I mean, it would be interesting, it would be interesting to see, I have, I have a feeling. It'll be very interesting, but it will be helpful, I guess, for you guys.
I'm seeing you pretty good and pretty sure. I'm scanning you pretty good, I'm sure.
Well, it's, there's a big difference between an engineering intern rate and a billable hours for a full budget consultant and what they do this for, so I'm... It would probably be very helpful to do that, for me it would be helpful to do that.
You could pick, you could pick their pockets and see what's going on, right?
Yeah. How quickly I can get it, I don't know, but I certainly can try.
Other questions for Carl relative to the stormwater utility portion of his budget? I think we touched it all.
Um, the next one is, is fleet operations and that pretty much is a straight transfer from Public Works. I don't think there's anything new in here other than it's different equipment for rehab and different, but these lines are pretty much a straight transfer from, um, Public Works over to, over to this org.
Yes, you just brought, broke out fleet operations from
Right.
the general Public Works.
Right. When I gave you the presentation, I detailed, uh, the painting and reconditioning, what we were looking to do there and the same with the miscellaneous tools. Specific questions about that, or if you want me to go through it again, I'd be happy to.
Um, fifty-three, two fifty? Is that a combination of lines?
It is, we used to budget, this is one of those historic relics and I never understood why, but we had a maintenance line that we put our pickup trucks and cars in and we had a maintenance line that heavy equipment went into. When we put the new chart of accounts together, we said, why are we doing it? We have a whole fleet software program that tracks every vehicle right at a penny, there's really no need to bracket in two places, so we, we merged two lines together.
Which of those?
Um, well, it, it's Fifty-three, two fifty, I'd have to look back at the existing chart of accounts, but they were kind of right next to each other. One of them was, uh...
Equipment maintenance supplements?
Maintenance supplies, equipment, forty-nine thousand, by, well, the current, you're looking at the current budget numbers.
Five-three, four-three-oh?
Yeah, five-four, five-three-oh and, um, five-three, three-four-oh. Those were the two.
Five-four, five-three-oh?
Five, five-four, five-three-oh.
Five-four, five-three-oh. I don't see that number.
Are you, while you're looking in the new chart, that's what was eliminated.
Oh.
No, no, I don't see that.
The old chart of accounts.
Oh, five-four, five-three-oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Forty-nine thousand, five hundred?
Yes, yeah, that and the, just above it there, the five-three, three-four-oh for a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Those were the two lines that were basically serving the same function, so we combined them in the new chart of accounts.
Any other questions for Carl on fleet operations? Solid waste recycling operations, page twenty-four.
Not, no, you know, not many changes here, obviously, um, I think, well, in the staff, no, no changes in the staff. I did bring back, if you look down at consulting services, um, the per, in this particular, in this division, we use consulting services as the closed landfill, that's where we capture our costs for the closed landfill, which is a strange place to do that, but way back when, the only landfill expense we had was our sampling, which was in a contracted consulting service, so it was the only thing in there, so we just, uh, back in two thousand, turned that into the landfill line. So, last year, we had always carried a, uh, cap maintenance contingency. Uh, last year, you folks took that out, uh, I did put it back in, so that's the change there. The other things that are in there is for the, the board's knowledge that we do have to do our, our groundwater and gas, um, monitoring sampling. We have the gas flare operations, we just had to replace a blower on that, um, so it is, it's getting older. We have the, uh, underground gas system, which doesn't require a lot of maintenance, but, so... There is the, the cap contingency and we have to mull, the cap mulling the steep slopes, we have to bring in a contractor. Since the sheep went away, we have to hire one of those special mowers.
That burn and run every day, Carl, for the methane and stuff that's coming out?
Whenever, it, it monitors the, the pressure of the gas in the wells and it comes on as needed, so it's not constant. It depends on how much gas is being produced under the cap.
I think it's basically like a belt releaseers.
Yeah. Our, um, we increased the, the brush grinding, you know, this is one of those, one of those things that it, in, the price it costs us to grind brush really is dependent on what the value of the chips are when we're done. For the last couple of years, we have not retained those chips anymore, we, we make it part of the deal to the contractor gets the chips, and so if, if there's a good strong market for chips, we pay less, if there's not, we pay more. Household has its waste, you know, that's completely dependent on what people schedule to bring us. The recycling removal, we've, we've gone up and down, this is not only, uh, this, this is all of the things in our facility that we have to, like tires, the things that we collect that we have to pay to, to dispose of, um, you know, batteries, freon, those sorts of items.
You don't make money on batteries?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look at which. I'm, I'm not sure if we make money on that or we have to pay.
They have to pay, they charge us, they, they pay pretty good for batteries.
Yeah, so, so that's probably not one that we're hitting that, but, you know, and then of course our, our single stream, we've had a couple of months this year where we've had to pay, so it's whatever the market is doing is, is what impacts us and sometimes it's revenue, sometimes we have to pay. From what I understand, the Chinese government is kind of clamping down on the stuff, that's the end market for most of the stuff as it goes over to China and they, uh, they're doing more environmentally conscious, I guess, over there, what comes into their borders and rejecting loads.
Fine.
Bulky waste is our, our building and demo, um, line that we get revenue, you know, that's not something that's really a cost to us, it's more, there's an offsetting revenue for that. The tipping is our, um, that's our solid waste that goes now to the landfill, most of it is going up to Bethlehem. Uh, that decrease is because of the deal that we made to, to haul to Bethlehem. The transportation, I did add some money in here just in case the truck, you know, we have a breakdown and we have to hire somebody to, to haul for us. Hopefully that won't happen, but that's what that transportation number is. Office supplies is, is just that, I mean, that's the stuff for the scale house. The operating supplies are the cans, when we have to buy replacement cans, uh, the recycle, the big buckets. It's a large number because it's, you gotta buy a whole tractor trailer load at a time, so when you, when you need them, you have to buy a lot of them. Last year, we were fortunate, we didn't have to order out. Yeah, actually, that shows, I don't know what your printout shows, we just got a shipment in. So, as of this printout that I'm looking at it, it showed it as not being spent too much, but...
These are the blue and green recycling?
What's that?
The September, um, report, it's tower thirty, thirty thousand, six ninety-six that has been spent on operating supplies.
Yeah, so when we have to do it, it's a big, it's usually a big ticket.
And your budget was only twenty-five hundred for that last year?
That's not what I asked for, that's what I ended up with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And that was all for the purchase, that's the only thing that's, comes out of that line, operating supplies?
Yeah, that's just for cans. I mean, we have to buy, you know, lids, sometimes we just have to order lids or tires, you know, wheels, but it's all, that's just strictly the carts.
Yeah, and we, we, we assemble them.
Right. You know, printing and binding, advertising, those are just things in the paper. That's, that cellphone, I think, is the, is the driver. Electricity, the diesel fuel. Um, the fleet maintenance is for all of the solid waste fleet and equipment, so that number, the hundred and eighteen is, you know, the backhoe, the two tractors, the, the three trash trucks.
The ninety thousand?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at fuel, you're right, ninety thousand, but same for the fuel, I mean, it's for all the, all of that stuff.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Where we have a fleet operations, why wouldn't all those be in, within that?
We've always tracked solid waste differently and I'll tell you why, because if I'm ever successful at getting a pay-as-you-throw system in here, it'll be a lot easier if it's broken out. We try to keep all the, that's quite frankly why the fleet stuff is out separate, that's why the stormwater stuff is out separate, because I do believe someday...
I thought we have software that tracks that.
It tracks the vehicle expenses.
Wouldn't that do the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, it could. It could, and, and really nowadays, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, we could anyway you want.
I'm saying, if, you know, if you're going to the trouble of establishing a fleet maintenance division, why wouldn't that capture all of your fleet maintenance costs?
And it
Budgetary.
It'd be fine for, I wouldn't have a problem doing that if you want to move it, we can move it right over. But that's the reason we always kept it separate, was just trying to keep the transfer station costs in one spot.
Well, I think part of it too, because it's a separate division, as was mentioned. Solid waste has always been a separate division.
And, and it's like cemetery, if you look at cemetery, it's a very small number, but there's a an equipment maintenance line and a fuel line in cemetery too, which is very small.
If, if I can, I, I think all it is, is it all depends on which way the pendulum swings during, you go through this, because you go through this where one group of people are, sit here at this board and sit at the budget committee, they want something tracked one way and you bring it in that way, and then you get to a point where you got a different group of peoples and they say, well, why is it done that way? And then it shifts, so I mean, these things shift over, you know...
Why go through the, why go through the process of creating a fleet operations when the only thing you're tracking is Public Works? If everything else has its own, why not just keep it in Public Works and everything's the same? Why are we creating a separate division of fleet operations if the only thing it's gonna be tracking is Public Works operations? Public Works Cemetery has its own, Public Works Recycling has its own, Public Works...
Yeah, no, I mean...
You know, I, I, it just is counterintuitive to
Yep.
establish something like that if it's... Establish something like that if it's not tracking everything.
Just a quick question. Do we ma- is maintenance considered, I mean, I know you've got maintenance here for yourself, but when we do maintenance, are we maintaining, your maintenance fleet maintains everything in town? Fire trucks, police vehicles, they maintain, I mean, to a certain degree.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get into the, you know, the pumps and.
No, 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 I'm not getting that. I'm saying you maintain those or whatever else, like, general maintenance?
Yeah.
Do we have a maintenance recording system as such? Or we have any kind of, we have documents on trucks and whatever, so we know it's worked, no, it's not been worked on?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it breaks it right down to a cost per hour to own and operate. You know, it captures the fuel, it captures the depreciation and the purchase price, so it's got everything.
Yeah, I was looking for more or less, if we've got, if we're indicating we're repairing parts or pieces that we actually keeping that as a file also, and we repaired such as the truck on this date, and this is what we did, and if it's back again for another repair.
Any, any truck, I think we started our fleet, this particular fleet software in 1999. So any truck
Since then?
Since then, we have the entire, the complete history on it. The ones that predate that are not so much.
Right, right.
I'll, I'll just throw this out to the board then. In that case, why not just take fleet operations and put it right back into regular public works operations? So we're not dealing with an extra breakout. It's just, you know, your public works operations, your recycling, your.
Or put all your fleet, in the fleet division.
Right, I mean, that would be.
You got a telephone.
Huh?
You got a telephone.
What was the rationale for doing it?
My rationale is because I believe someday it'll be an enterprise-supported, self-supporting enterprise fund. That's the trend in the industry.
Fleet or?
Fleet.
So were you?
Fleet should be in there.
Were you looking at, taking it out of solid waste, out of, and out of?
It could, you know, I just never, I didn't even think of it. I certainly have no problem with it. It'd be a very simple thing to do, to move that. Because we do, I mean, we don't rely on the budget to track our vehicles.
Right.
So all of our vehicles are in that fleet software. It's merely, I kept, just because historically, we kept solid waste and solid waste. But to me, it makes perfect sense to have them all in one place.
I think so.
Yeah.
Be easier to track it, I would think.
But the only thing is, is then you, what you lose is when you look at the budget for solid waste, what the actual cost of solid waste is, because it's right there in the budget.
Yeah, and again, not, not so much for me, because I'm intimate enough with it, I know.
Right.
You know, a lot of towns are always calling, geez, what's your solid waste budget? What's your solid, well, if I tell them what it is with all those expensive trucks, they go, wow, you guys are awesome. So it's just that little caveat that.
And that's why I would think until that time comes when fleet operations is that standalone, self-funded, I'd just soon see all of these back in
Public works operations.
The departments they belong, because then you at a glance can see each one of those and make those comparisons.
I can, I can play the game any way you want.
I have no preference.
Whatever makes it easier for everybody else. But that, my rationale was we're at a, we're defining a new chart of accounts.
Right.
Makes sense to me. Who knows how long we'll have this chart of accounts?
So Carl, overall, your budget is up about 200,000. And the line share of that is the MS4 permitting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, is the MS4, what I heard was 270?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I heard 270?
270. But the reason his budget's only up 200 is because some positions are being charged directly to sewer now. We're not.
Yeah, that, of course, that's kind of offsetting, because we used to have the revenue
Right.
Right.
Offset it, but the.
So it's just sliced up differently.
Yeah, I mean, we had some considerable savings. You know, the salt line was a big savings.
Right, right.
The, the tipping was a pretty good savings. So, you know, right there, you've got almost $100,000 in savings, just in those two lines. That offsets that other increase.
But if I can, what I'm hearing, though, is if we don't do the MS4, your budget would actually be down
Right.
About 70, 60, 70,000 dollars. Okay. Basically, mainly because of the salt?
Level.
No, it will be down. Well, if, if the MS4 cost was 270,000, and your total increase is only 201,000.
That's what I, that's what I.
If, if the MS4 doesn't come through, it sounds like your budget will be down about 7,000.
Yep.
Yeah, and we, we, we gotta look at those numbers, but probably. There, there's no big increases
Right.
Other than that. There's no big increases. There are some savings.
But there are some large, large decreases, such as salt.
Without MS4, it's at least level or below. It's not, it's not increasing.
Right.
Big if.
Yeah.
Real big if.
And when do we anticipate knowing? In December, you said?
I don't think we'll know.
No?
I, I think, the way I've, since the minute I put this together, what's been in my mind is, at the last minute, when you folks in the budget committee are trying to agree on some place, it'll be whatever ti- you know, when is that, beginning of December or something? If, if we haven't gotten a permit at that point, I mean.
We go with your revised, non-permit numbers for that division.
Yeah, it, you know, you're throwing the dice.
Right.
Who knows what EPA will do? I mean, I can't guess. I just, I hear rumors, everybody hears rumors. I could try to pin EPA down, but I doubt they'll tell me anything.
Is there a phase-in period when they introduce a new permit?
Not usually, but like I said, they've gotten enough comment that the rumor I hear, and it's only rumor, is that they, they're going to give us an implementation phase.
Well, I would expect so, because, you know, if, if it comes in midway through
A budget cycle.
Our budget cycle, we haven't budgeted for it.
And towns are all over the place.
Right, exactly.
Calendar year, fiscal year.
Right.
So what?
And how do you budget for it? Then it's hard to budget for the numbers until we see what the actual permit looks like. So it seemed to me, if, if it does come in 2014, they wouldn't implement it until 2015 to give towns an opportunity to properly budget for it. But that's, you know, speculation.
When, when Regional Administrator Spalding was up talking in Manchester, we really hit him with a lot of those kind of questions. And he very clearly recognizes that the municipal folks do have that problem, you know, that he, he, he gets it. Whether the permit-writing folks down there get it as well, who knows?
I, I understand you had a question last night about the revenues, and did we count the revenues for Goffstown Village Water Precinct? It was not in there, so I have added in the 78,000.
So where does that put us with the that number with the, with the MS4 number?
No, this was revenues.
I understand.
The work was done this year, and we'll have revenues next year.
Oh, oh, okay, the next year, okay, the next year, not this year, okay.
So just to recap, could, could we get a final, all-inclusive cost for the additional personnel? Full-time, part-time benefits?
For the stormwater, yes.
For the stormwater?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll break that. I honestly think I already have it. I think when I created the budget, I sort of, that's how I did it, but.
I just have a quick question, Carl. I don't know if you know this is available. I was in Chris Bowden's pit the other day buying some materials, and he's got a, I don't know if it'd do any good for us if it's something you might want to look into. He has a new product up there, it's a washed, manufactured stone, sand materials. Has zero fines in it. You know, would that be something we could use on the roads to cut our salt down at all? Well, I'm just asking, is there zero fines in it, which means there would be nothing, no, no fines going into the watersheds or? It's actually a zero-fine material, there's no fines at all.
Are you talking about spreading in the wintertime?
Right, winter sand, like a winter sand for?
We.
Because it's a gray grit, which I'm saying, it just draws the sun, you know, for salt purposes and maybe cutting back salt. I'm just, I don't know if we're working on it, I'm just questioning, that's all.
Sand, you know, sometimes they're going to pee stone.
That's what it basically is, it's, it's not pee stone, but it's.
It, it really, we use it on dirt roads, on pavement. It's, it doesn't do much other than make people feel better. And it creates a mess in the springs, and you gotta go sweep it all up, and it becomes contaminated. So, so it, it turns into a stormwater issue, because the
Yeah.
Fines, the particles in the sand, that's what the pollutants in stormwater cling to. So you
Now you've got a disposal.
End up with a disposal thing, and it, we've really gotten away from using sand unless we absolutely have to. The only time we would even think about it is if we were in one of those ice storms, and we would just apply it on hills and.
I was just curious, I know he has a chart that has, he had made that with zero fines specifically for that reason.
Yeah, well, and, and you know, there's a lot of towns that still believe in it, and they're we, we've been 100% salt town for a long time, and EPA is going to keep pushing us to be a sand's really bad, so.
Well, a little salt's much better. When you put salt on a wound, it's pretty tough. I'd rather have sand thrown at it. You know? Just, just something thrown out there, that's, I'm just
Yeah.
Seeing if there's any directions we can go to do anything different.
Any other questions for Carl on any portions of his budget?
One question.
Yes.
How many deductibles are you carrying?
Anything else? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That leaves us with
Your turn?
It's my turn.
Have three. Take a break, Sue.
Again, as you know, there are several lines when we put our budgets together in July and August that we don't have real numbers for. We're still waiting for some real numbers that we should have by the end of October. So on your electronic version, anything in pink, which includes unemployment, workers' comp, benefits, even professional dues and postage, some of those numbers we didn't have, and you'll have those before you conclude on your budget, hopefully next week. We can start with admin and economic development. That division has an increase, as stated before, 33,000, or 4.57%. Remember that all benefits now are, since this year, are in admin for all of town room. No new employees here, no increase in hours in this division. Basically, what we've done is on grassmare facility expenses, we've broken out each of the expenses, heating oil, water, electricity, propane, facility maintenance, facility maintenance supplies, miscellaneous expenses. They just all be in one line. Again, waiting to hear if Post Office has approved the increase. They've asked for a three-cent increase in mailing rates. We find that out, if that, when and if that's approved, we'll be asking for an adjustment in all postage lines. We did find out, I haven't received it in writing, that there is an increase in NHMAD dues. So that line, under professional dues, for, for 100, full increase to 15,116. The line share of that is the NHMAD dues.
Employee development to 44,300?
Yes, that reflects employee development for anyone in this division. And in this division is the town administrator, assistant town administrator, and building supervisor, and our executive secretary.
In 2012, we adopted 4,000, we only spent 600.
Yes.
2013, it's 5,000, we haven't expended anything yet.
Yes, we have budgeted for tuition for one of the employees to do a graduate program. And we've kept him so busy this year that he hasn't been able to take any.
Keep him busy. Okay. Minute takers, 45, 350?
Right, that, as you know, part of this is transferred from the regular wage line. Our executive secretary was on 40 hours a week, and is now 35. So we have a minute taker who comes in, and that's a wash. It's just in a different line now.
Yeah.
And that's also includes the minute taking for Economic Development Council.
Equipment rental leases on office equipment, I assume?
Um, the equipment in regent is the coffee machine and the postage meter.
Questions for Sue on the admin and eco-development, economic development portions of the budget.
Sue, where, where was the economic development minute taker?
In the same minute taker line as the five, uh, 45, 350. They're both lumped in there.
Right, where was it originally?
It was in here since 2012.
Oh, okay. So the 6,128 increases due to?
Slutman's meetings.
Okay.
It's also a transfer.
Right.
It's a transfer from regular wages into that line, so there's a reduction.
Right.
From regular wages, yeah.
Because the secretary went from 40 to 35 hours.
Gotcha.
And there's one deductible in there for insurance. If, I knew you'd ask.
Okay. That was my question. I figured it, that the amount that was in there.
Yeah.
Anything else? Page nine.
The town clerk's office again is up 7,353, or 4.05%. And there are no increase in hours here. And the postage will probably have to be adjusted, because that was based upon the current rates. And as soon as we hear on postage, we'll be asking for an adjustment in that line. the current rates and as soon as we hear on postage, we'll be asking for an adjustment in that line.
Printing and binding, that's for the, uh, year, year-end report books, I take it?
No, that's under other general government for the annual reports. Um, printing and binding is for ballots that they have to print.
Yeah.
And also the binding is any of the archiving that they have to do.
Doesn't that include town reports?
No. That will be under other general government.
That's right. That's right, this is the new, this is the new format.
Yeah, um, town reports and voters guides have always been under other general government.
Right.
Don't know why, that's where, why they live there, but they've always lived there.
Anything else, folks in Town Hall? Okay. Page ten.
Elections, and, uh, there are three elections next year. Yet, you'll notice a reduction. This year there's only one election, but there's three elections next year and you're probably looking to buy mine some why. Uh, and that's because we transferred the slatting wages to admin. That's why admin went up more and this one's down. So it's just a transfer between divisions.
Food line, Sue, is for
Collections, right?
Free elections, yeah.
Okay.
To feed, um,
Election workers.
Election workers, yes. Kathy does a good job of keeping those prices down and getting the biggest bang for her buck.
Good job. Any questions on the election portion? Please, pretty straightforward. Page eleven is the, uh,
Finance, yes.
What we need to note here?
Um, a hundred and eighty hours of finance director's wages is now charged to sewer. We have added fifty-two hours during the first half of the year. A total of fifty-two hours for, um, to increase it's two hours a week for each of the three hourly employees for the implementation of munis.
Sue, can we get a dollar figure for that?
I can get that for you.
How many people have we got in finance?
We have a total of four full-time employees in finance and three of them hourly. And we were able to reduce the, which line was that? I'm gonna have to do another actuarial report, so consulting and contracted services line went to zero because we got that done this year. Again, that postage line will have to go up. If their ta- their postage rate increases.
Can we pre-buy forever stamps?
Self furniture and fixtures advertising, just placeholders?
Yes.
Any questions on finance? On page twelve is tax collection.
Tax collection in the wage line, you also see an increase of two hours per week, so I'll include that in your numbers Nick that you asked for. Uh, again, due to, um, they'll be implementing the tax module next year. Not much there. The, um, they had a slight, um, increase in postage based on the estimate mailways gave them, but again, I think mailways wasn't estimating a three cent increase. I think they were estimating a two cent increase, so we'll have to revisit that and get a updated number from them.
Had the registry number drop?
Registry dates, same, thirteen hundred.
Eight hundred.
No, it's eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Oh, no, then there's a five hundred.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It was broken out.
Oh, okay.
It should be thirteen hundred for line, if you see there's a five hundred below it, it isn't, it should be that.
Oh, oh, okay, yep, thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I caught it on your electronic one I sent you, but
Got it. Any questions on that portion? Pretty straightforward. Access page thirteen, revaluation of property.
Yes, this is your assessing office. Big increase here is his legal line.
Sorry, this what, I'm sorry?
Legal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, legal services, four-five-oh-two-oh. That's increased from five thousand to fifteen thousand and that's due to the Fairpoint litigation. Courts told us we had to charge them for their, uh, tax them on their posts and, um, they're going back to court after this has been in the courts for Verizon one, two, and three.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're back for Fairpoint one, I guess.
How many employees does this cover?
Huh?
How many employees do we cover in here?
Two, full-timers. Although one of the full-timers is a shared position, it's not reflected that way in the budget. The, the secretary is a secretary for the assessor and the building inspector, but all of wages are in here.
Right, could it all in same department?
And the consulting service line is for what?
Oh, that's, um, our five-year revow, we have a rolling revow and we hire a consultant to go out and do the listing measure.
Yep.
And that's required by DRA.
Any questions for Sue on that portion? Sue, next page, thirteen, InfoTech.
And as stated in my presentation, this is the biggest increase is in InfoTech. It's a forty-eight thousand four hundred and ten dollar increase and the overall budget for all of Town Hall is eighty-two thousand. So most of the increase is here. And of that, the computer software accounts for thirty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars of that increase. And I have a note here, uh, during my presentation, I'd mentioned that, um, Evelyn told me that there was a new, they were rolling out a new welfare software that she can implement this month. But to renew it next October, there will be a user fee of a thousand forty dollars, which was not known at the time we put this budget together. So that would be an add-on to the computer software line here if we want to use that software.
How much, a thousand?
One thousand forty dollars.
How many people again was in this, this division?
How many people in this division?
Two, one, three.
Two full-timers.
Two, four.
Yep.
And internet access is zeroed out because it's now down to fifty-two twenty, right?
Yeah, it's all in one line, telecommunicus, our providers, all comes to one bill.
Any questions on InfoTech? Sue? Nick, did you have?
Nope, all set.
All set. Page fifteen, planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, um, I fear that the legal line has not been increased enough for next year. As you can see, he's twenty thousand dollars over his budget this year.
Are there a lot of things on the horizon or are they?
Yeah, there's a lot of appeals and litigation going on.
All right.
And you know, this is, it doesn't matter how our planning board or ZBA board votes, one side or the other is gonna be suing.
Right.
So we're just a very litigious society. Um, you have two full-timers in this.
The money that's needed to make up for that legal line, where's that coming from, Sue, is that?
Position?
Yeah, haven't figured that out yet.
Throughout the budget.
Excuse me?
Throughout the budget.
Throughout the budget, okay.
The good news is when the the last bill came in, it was much lower, thank goodness.
Okay. We still got a couple of months to go.
Yeah. One Supreme Court case can cost you like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yep. Any questions on planning and zoning, folks? Nick, y'all sat with that one? Page sixteen is other general government.
Other general government, um, this includes, um, and this is slightly down from last year. This includes your conservation commission, your historic district commission, town report newsletter, budget committee expenses, wellness committee expenses, and civic ceremonies. That budget is down.
Got nothing there, anybody got anything there? Page seventeen, building and health.
Building and health, uh, again, um, part of the building super was in this division is now in admin, that's why admin went up more than the others. It was basically a shifting. So you have one full-timer here. And, um, vaca- and vacation coverage if needed. We have, um, an agreement with the town in New Boston, so they share what they can to cover for Mark when he's away, but
We just signed that mutually agreement this year, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nothing, um, I don't see many other increases here.
Okay.
But you're gonna
Oh, I know, we did.
Postage, right?
We're gonna revisit the postage. We did add in this, um, division a public health line, um,
Mosquitoes?
Mosquitoes, right, and we put in thirty-two hundred.
Yeah.
I'm, I will watch last night's meeting, I heard, um, Tim Susi did a good deal.
Yeah, he did a very good job.
Very interesting, actually.
Nice presentation, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess there is a lot to know about mosquitoes.
There is.
Yes, whoever, if we do it, somebody's gonna have to go to mosquito school.
Well, I, I don't know, uh, he said, uh, he had a three-quarter time person.
Hmm.
I don't know if that person would be available to do trapping if you decided you wanted to do trapping and testing in town, whether they'd be available to come here to do our parks.
Yeah.
To make it a full-time equivalent?
I'm not sure we'd be a quarter of the time. But, you know, whatever his hourly rate is, maybe we could pay him out of there as a contracted service.
Okay, and planning, page eighteen, or is the human services?
Human services, this reflects a half of a person, of a full-time employee.
One half.
That's appropriate name. Human services for half a person.
And, um, the welfare director is requesting a three thousand dollar increase in direct assistance. Again, she is seeing an influx as a result, um, of cutbacks in state and federal programs for the board.
Pretty straightforward, any
Yep.
questions on that final page?
Nope.
Any other final questions for Sue on any of the admin budgets?
So the total budget for everything was eighty-two thousand, three point five two, seven percent?
For
Town Hall and general.
The amount of the increase?
I'm just going off of the highlights that you, eighty-two thousand.
Eighty-two, two eighty-four, yep. Or three point five seven percent.
But that doesn't
But that doesn't include all the lines we have to change throughout the budget.
Like postage.
Property insurance, postage, benefits, all of those. Like every department.
All set, any final questions for Sue? So we've heard all the presentations. We've taken some time to look at CIP. What have we got left? We, we need to finish by
Next week.
Next week.
By the end of the month, yeah.
We've scheduled one more meeting next week or two?
Two. We have three total, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you have next week.
Yeah, that's right, we scheduled three, hoping we'd only need two.
Right.
So we're doing Monday, Tuesday, next week?
Yes. Right, now you're projected tax rate for two thousand and fourteen, based on what you've done so far, is a dollar ten increase.
Dollar ten?
Yes.
That's what, the, what we've done so far, that's the, all the adjustments we've made so far?
Right. Now, I did, that, that includes what you asked, that's if we run two things that you asked for last night. You asked to run the road plan at one point five million and add the hundred and ten back in for some vehicle DPW. So if you do, with that done, you're at ten eighty-two.
You're at ten eighty-two, yeah.
At one and a half million?
Yes.
Sue, refresh my memory about repairs and painting on the town hall.
That's the library.
Love the library, okay. Ten eighty, ten point eight two.
And what percentage is that, Sue, of an increase?
Uh, About eleven?
What, what is your figure for the appropriation?
Um, twenty-six million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-six million, I'm sorry, twenty-six million?
Seven twenty-seven, five sixty-nine, that should have automatically updated for you because I had it all coded if you were keeping, you know.
Oh, no, I wasn't.
Oh, okay.
So I just totally wiped out the, uh,
Oh, okay.
The formula.
The formula's gone, all right.
Twenty-six million, seven what?
Seven twenty-seven, five sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Revenue, um, is twelve million, three fifty-four.
Three fifty-four, yeah.
One thirty-four. Estimated use of fund balance, five hundred thousand. And then your war service credit overlay, MS one should be the same. And then your war service credit overlay, MS1 should be the same as on your sheet. Which brings the net appropriation down to 14,322,185.
Say that again?
14,322,185. Like to take another look at revenues before next week. I'll have Don look them over with all the department heads in case they have any grants that they know of that are coming up, or other revenue, so we don't miss anything, like the Glass Town Village water one that we added in tonight. Make sure there's no other revenues out there that haven't been conveyed to Don when he did the revenues back in July.
I'd like to just revisit the fund balance and get a feeling for the board as to whether or not they would support a portion of the fund balance to offset the tax increase.
That's exactly where I was here, gonna bring it up.
But we are, 500,000.
Yeah, we're using 500,000. Plus, you're voting from surplus of 463,000.
Well, this is 500, just to offset the tax increase, not, this is not the dedicated projects.
No, those are in a different place, individualized, because if they don't pass, you don't use it, obviously.
We're taking nearly a million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, total, yeah, when you consider the projects here.
You wanna make sure that you still have 4 million in there.
Right, right.
Where we're at, we're at, we're at...
We're at 4 million?
With the use, yeah, with what you've planned on doing, the 463,000 for those CIP projects, and this 500,000, you're just under a million, yeah.
And then there's no more.
Well, and whatever you add to it.
Whatever you add to surplus, yeah, but that's not gonna be a huge amount.
No.
No.
So that's a consideration, is next year, we may not have a half a million dollars to put towards the tax rate.
You usually have, you usually, that's usually a fair number each year.
Well, I'm saying, so we would need a surplus of 500,000.
Yeah, we did last year, we had that surplus. It's between revenues, additional revenues that we didn't expect, and the...
Expect expenses, nevermind.
And the underspending.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, can we get a budget, I mean, a surplus projection from the department heads?
Yeah, John usually does that, and contacts department heads to see what their surplus would be. He usually does that later, but I can ask him to do a guesstimate now.
Yeah, I think it might be... Well, it's also, we do it, period, like every month, we could do it every three weeks. It just gives us that benchmark, you know, versus waiting till the end of November or something and getting that. But that can kinda help here.
Yeah.
Right. Because every dollar that we could use from surplus could help.
Yeah, but you probably wanna keep that surplus in for next year's budget, or the following year's budget. We can get your estimate.
It's not that bad, Mark.
I know.
How does a $110 increase compare to years past?
Huge, it's an 11% increase.
Is that...
Yeah. Typically, what it's been, under 35 cents increase? 35, 36 cents, under that each year.
How much are we looking at to come out of the budget, to bring it down to level fund? Seven twenty-five sixty-nine.
We had a net town appropriation of 12.5 million, we got 14.3.
It's like 1.6 million, roughly?
They got 1.8.
Yeah, right in net, let me see. We had appropriations adopted of 25, 327, 569, it would bring it to 976. Be a four cent. Increase.
Would you say that was 1.6, Nick?
I'm just, I'm just trying to refine it a little bit more.
1.45? Yeah, 1.45. Plus 1,450,000 less to get to level fund.
If EPA, if the MS4 doesn't go through, there's 270, but we won't know that until when?
We're gonna know that till next year.
You know, it's later in the year now, we have better revenue numbers for this year, so we can revisit the revenues, see what we can pick up there before next week. But you're not gonna pick up 1.45.
No, I know, I know.
But you need to have that tax rate under $10, I think.
Sue, are these figures budgeting, I know we're not gonna pick up a million dollars, but are they budgeting salary increases of 2%?
No, these are 3%.
Can we, can we see it revised with, I mean, obviously DPW was, that has to stay at 3%?
Right, the union piece.
Right, because that was the Warren article, was budgeted 3%.
And, so you'd only be looking at 2% for non-union, because the other unions don't have any increase in here?
Right.
Right.
So you'd only be looking at 2% for non-union. You can do that. Now, no cuts were made last night, right? Except for the ambulance I heard was cut?
Right.
On EMS.
Yeah, that was an EMS fund, so there was no net, no net effect on the budget.
Right.
To 140 or 150?
Yeah, 145.
So that's zero now? Okay.
For the EMS side.
Right.
The other thing we need to, our assumption on property valuation? Will we know any difference on that, or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay, too early.
Way too early, yeah. That's always an estimate.
I know.
We estimated a half percent increase.
I know.
Which has usually been safe, except that you did a statistical revaluation.
Right.
I mean, there was actually growth of half percent in town, but it wasn't reflected in the numbers because of the...
But I mean, it could go either way on us.
Yeah.
If it goes the wrong way on us.
Well, you think of it in terms of always like a year behind, so have home prices increased this year? Slightly?
Yeah.
So it should go up next year.
It all depends. It all depends on which classification of homes went up, and how many of those make up what's in Gopson. Because if you're talking single families, or you're talking condos?
We're not doing a statistical reveal next year, so this would be, I'm basing it on new growth in town.
Right, I understand.
So that half percent I'm talking about is new growth. Whos Club Apartments are going in, those weren't on there?
Yeah, but what could offset that is if you had other classifications that didn't go up, they went down slightly.
But we're not doing a statistical update next year, so the classification shouldn't be changing next year. Hope not, anyway, we did that this year.
Well, can I suggest we go through each of the tabs for each of the departments, and look for areas that we think we can make cuts? So we would start with tab number two, which is the police department.
I was wondering, could we have some time to do that? Because I've kind of been taking notes, and there's some information I'd like to get from the department heads before. Could we, could we kind of do that on Mon...
Yeah, we can, sure.
Just because that would give us some time to do some calculations.
Okay, so why don't, yeah, why don't we...
I can get to the information.
Why don't we plan out how we want to use the rest of our time? How we want to spend the rest of tonight? And then we've got Monday and Tuesday of next week to follow up. So what do the board, members of the board want to do, relative to that? It's 8:30 now, we've still got some time tonight, if we want to hang out and do...
Well, can I suggest that we perhaps review the items in CIP that we talked about, funding with fund balance, and just have a discussion on that, so we kind of decide whether or not we're in agreement, you know, where we are with that, to see if we want to change anything on that.
Yeah, I'm okay with going back to that, revisiting it, so. And then, Nick, do you want some time to digest what we've heard? And get the information, additional information we've requested, so that Monday's meeting, we now have a fuller picture?
Right, and I would plan myself on coming back Monday night with where I think we could cut in the amounts.
Right.
I would think that that's what everybody else would be able to do, so that at least that night, we'd have a... If I could ask, though, we're at an 11% increase.
Yeah.
Is there a feeling of the board where we want to be? Are we just gonna, I mean, if we go through all these lines again and say, we're not cutting, you know, we're gonna cut $10 here, and a hundred, you know, are we okay with 11%? Or are we gonna need to sharpen the pencils and make some painful decisions?
It's one and three, you're taking on about $10 here, $100 there, it's not gonna do it.
Right.
We really need to get to the meat of the order.
And that's the more difficult question for us, is like, where, what's our target? What do we want to hit?
Let's pose the question, what is our target? Where, what do we want to hit?
We're estimating this year's is gonna be $9.72 on the town side.
That's what you're estimating, or we're estimating?
Yes, we still don't have a tax rate setting date, yeah.
And that's an increase?
Oh, from previous year?
Well, what is the...
I don't know, previous year. No, that's the estimate, that's the 2013 tax rate that should have been set by now. So the question is, where do you want to be in relation to that for next year?
971? I'm just going out there. About a reduction one year, just a hell of a...
Right now, you're at 1082.
Right.
About 1082.
To me, 11% is way too much, we need to be at least half of that.
Half and then some.
Yeah, yeah, at least half of that.
When you work your numbers, Sue, can you just kind of give us a rough idea? I know we've mentioned it before, the fact that insurance has gone up, all the town stuff has gone up for insurance. Can you kind of give us an idea, an overview, what last year versus this year, how much, how much it's gone up, or how much you think it's gonna go up? Is that something you could do?
The increases that are beyond our control, I think is what you meant.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, once we finalize those numbers. But like I said, we're not gonna have the property liability and the workers' comp insurance rates till next week. They set them on October 30th.
Great timing.
Yeah. What this doesn't account for is, is that 7,000, I told you, in unemployment, that is not accounted for in what I've done so far. All those lines will be adjusted. If you were able to get the tax rate to $10 instead of 1082, that would be like a 2.88% increase over this year.
Sorry, say that again?
If you could get the 1082 down to $10, that would be a 2.88% increase.
I think what Mark's question is important, too, because what's the percentage of increase that we have absolutely no control over?
That's where I was going, I mean, we, and I've said it several times, I mean, we have no control over what the state sets, and what, I mean, are we gonna sit here and beat our heads to try to...
Discretionary and nondiscretionary, right?
Well, I mean, that's, until you have that number, we see the big picture.
I mean, we could sit here and try, but...
So a $10 increase, Sue, would require how much in cuts?
Oh, we didn't get there yet.
Well, if that's gonna be a target, we need to know what the cuts, that equates to in cuts.
Give us good news.
Probably about a million.
Probably.
I think it was around 18, 1.8. Something wrong?
A million dollars would bring it down to 1006.
Yeah, I think it was 118, wasn't it, 1122?
So about 1.1, 1.2 million?
Oh, 1.1. 1.1 is $9.99. So that's right, right about there, 1.1 and change. So that's about a 3%. 2.777. 2.74%. Before we get paid the big bucks, right?
Yeah.
Huge, huge.
Well, one option is to go back to the CIP matrix and look at those projects that we're gonna use the fund balance for. If there's half a mil, half a million dollars there.
Just let them in.
I don't follow. I don't follow what you're saying.
Well, we identified $463,000 in fund balance for certain projects. If we were not to do those, we'd have that money available to offset the tax rate. Wouldn't we not, would we not? I mean, just for discussion purpose, not that we'd take that route. But if we decided not to fund any of those projects, we could use that additional money...
And push those off the next year?
And offset the tax rate this year. I mean, just for discussion purposes. I mean, I'd have to go back and look at the projects, I don't remember all of them in detail, but...
They were.
Yonkin Unicam project, Pleasant Street Bridge sidewalk, Edgem Pond Reconstruction.
AD Elevator.
Elevator, library painting and repair.
Did you have that total amount?
HVAC at the PD.
400.
I had 469, 201, that's the number I had.
So I could subtract the appropriations by 469, 201, and add 469 to the estimated use of fund balance? Do the same thing?
469, 201. Four sixty-nine, two oh one.
I get ten dollars, eleven cents.
What do we need, about another two million, about two hundred thousand? To reduce the road plan by two hundred?
I just see two issues with that.
With what, reducing?
Doing this.
Oh, I, I, there are issues, sure there are. I just, it's just...
It's deferred maintenance.
Not even that, but next year, you're not gonna have nine hundred thousand dollars to put towards reducing taxes, so your tax rate's gonna shoot up.
Next year.
Plus you have another half a million dollars worth of CIP that you've pushed off.
Next year's gonna be...
So it compounds as gonna be worse than this year.
But without having this discussion, we wouldn't be having, acknowledging that point.
That's right.
You know, we really like not to see you pushing it enough.
Yeah.
That's snowballers.
And that's why we're in where we're at. And the biggest project on there is the dam. And the dam, I think we all agree, needs to get done. There's a assumed responsibility there that we have. That's the largest one, the next one is the sidewalk.
What's the dam numbers, anybody can... One forty?
Page five.
Yeah, page five was the issue, here across the front.
Two ten, line two ten.
Line two ten, yeah.
Yonkin Unic Dam.
Hundred and forty.
What are we budgeting our road plan at?
One point five million.
I'm not gonna have a million off that. One point five million budgeting that?
Hate to do it, but take five hundred thousand out of the road plan.
Not very many places we can take big bites. It's gonna take some big bites.
I mean, if we, we leave Kyle with a million dollars, I mean, it's, you got a million dollars to do something with. Put five thousand dollars back in to lower the, the budget. The dam, I agree with Phil, I mean, it's a priority, there is some liabilities there. If that dam decides to go south on us...
Well.
DS order is repair to breach it.
Oh, exactly, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're, our hands are tied.
Why?
We breach it or repair it.
Right.
We have to do one or the other.
Right, breaching's a hundred, I mean, repairing is one forty, breaching is fifteen or twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Is that used by the water district at all?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, he owns a dam on the other end. Or he doesn't want to just maintain it. I don't know why that is, he doesn't go that well, that's what they're, I guess, um...
What do they use it for? You know, draw off it.
Uh, no, it's part of the watershed.
Yeah.
Appears to be, I, I don't know, I have no clue, I know. They have to maintain that dam on the other end.
On the other end, yeah.
At the beach end.
Yeah.
Obviously the beach end, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah.
It used to be considered the beach end.
And we have to look at what the revenue loss would be on the...
Taxes, taxes originally.
Your tax, your evaluation of those homes that are now on the lake would no longer have that.
Yeah, one of the waterfront, they might be a little upset.
I think so, they would have some angry taxpayers down here.
Yeah, it's not, we're not the first town to wrestle with that.
That's true, huh?
There's a lot of towns in New Hampshire that are wrestling with deficient dams.
Yeah, but that's a lot, that's a big chunk of money.
They keep them, who pays to repair them?
That's not a big chunk of money, if you repair it, it's probably good for our lifetime, we're not gonna be looking at it again. I mean, is it worth one or the other? Take the dam away and take the punishment from taxpayer, or do we leave it there and...
I guess we'll have to, that's a different topic along, but is that, is the dam at the lowest level of the lake? Pond?
Pretty close, pretty close.
Is there another alternative, maybe drawing down the level and just having the dam as a, kind of an overflow?
Yeah, I don't know what...
You have to look, I don't know.
I don't know what DS's order is relative to the dam. That's a pretty shallow impound, impound, you wouldn't have to draw it down very much before you'd start seeing a lot of stumps and...
Start having some islands out there.
I don't think that's a good idea, should keep the dam there.
Right now you have five point one million in special articles.
Sorry, how much?
Five point one million in special articles. You've got Main Street.
For the seven projects?
Oh, you've got Main Street, you've got Capital Reserve Fund for fire, hundred thousand. You've got Crispin House for twenty thousand. You've got the fire station for five, four point five million, four point five six million. You've got placeholders for the three collective bargaining agreements of a dollar, so we still had to fill in those blanks. Yonkin Unic Dam at one forty. Pleasant Street Bridge, which Phil read these off before, eighty. Detention Pond Reconstruction, seventy-three. The elevator at Town Hall, forty thousand. Library painting repair, thirty-five thousand. HVAC at PD, it's twenty-six thousand, two oh one. And then the IT, serve virtualization at PD for seventy-five thousand.
You said five point...
One, seven, four million.
These will never pass.
Right.
If you have that kind of special articles on the warrant...
With an eleven percent increase?
They're all, they're all going down.
Well. Of that five million, how much is coming from the, the fund balance?
Four hundred and sixty-three thousand.
So those, right, those five or six items should pass because there's no tax impact on those. The biggest one is the, the fire station.
Seven of them, seven of them would be offset with...
You know, the only point I'm making is, when you have that amount on, don't anticipate just because they're coming out of fund balance.
I agree, I agree.
That's not the way the voters see it.
But all those other ones, your collective bargaining agreements, the bond, which is not a simple majority?
Right. Super majority on that one. Capital Reserve Fund.
Capital Reserve Fund.
Honestly, the only thing I see that should be on that warrant is the collective bargaining unit, agreements if they come forward. That should be the main focus. Think amount of capital reserve with that, it's not an issue. Other things up there.
What did you say about capital reserve?
I'm sorry. It's getting late. It's getting late. But coming out of, of fund balance.
Oh.
Okay, if you have collective bargaining units and items coming out of fund balance, I don't think that's an issue. But once you start putting other things on there and you look at, those crazy selectmen are looking for five and a half million dollars and the tax rate's going up to what? Forget it, it's all going down.
Is it possible, what is possible, would it, to put all of the fund balance items together into one article? And say, these are the projects which total this, they're one-time, you know, expenses? And this is the fund balance amount which is also made up of the municipal...
They all go down together then?
Understood, but sometimes we get flack because we separate them all out and people pick here and...
I had for a spot just opposite.
Yeah, you go, you know, and the, the thing of it is, is no matter how you do it, we're gonna get flack. Because if you don't separate them out, you put them together to keep the, to shorten everything up, it's why didn't you let us vote on them? Six one, half dozen of them.
You're gonna put on a table, see what sticks.
Yeah, I guess somebody can vote for them all if they want to.
Exactly.
But they have the option of breaking it out if we don't break it out for them.
Mr. Chair, I believe nine o'clock is coming. I think our brains are fried, let's go home.
The witching hour? Looking, looking at a lot of blank faces.
But I think it's something that we need to seriously think about is what's gonna be on there.
Well, I think we've thrown a lot out on the table that will give us food for thought between now and Monday.
Tuesday.
Tues, Tuesday. What's the agenda like on Monday?
Like...
Is it?
Like, like fifteen minutes?
So...
Yeah, we're working on this on Monday.
We could work, we could put this on Monday's agenda.
If we can start Monday, maybe finish Tuesday and not have to worry about it.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Well, I thought that was the plan.
That's the plan.
It is, but I mean, there's a, there's a third, there's a third day there just in case.
And who's handing out trick or treat candy here on the thirty-first?
I will.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to give you.
Okay. We'll have the candy up front on chairs.
When is the thirty-first, next Tuesday?
Thurs, Thursday, right?
Thursday.
Okay, so we're gonna meet between...
Costume? Gonna be in costume?
Of course.
All right.
He's gonna wear the one that he had all set up for the regatta.
No, not that.
You didn't have to see, you weren't here, Steve. His costume marking around town was, he'd made his...
No costume, much.
Yes, it was scoochy, very nice. It was a hot suit apparently, but it was a nice suit, he walked around, he made up, so, pretty cool.
Okay, so that, folks, we were a little burnt out for tonight, let's adjourn for tonight.
Yeah, let's...
We'll pick it up at the, after our regular agenda on Monday.
Okay.
So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, we've got a motion. Second, calls, payers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero, thank you.